This conference will now be recorded.
Regents?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the approval of the regular agenda. Is there any questions or comments? Entertained a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Third item is consent agenda. Any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Fourth item on the agenda is the public is invited to be here and matters not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Please state your name and address. Address. And come to the podium if you'd like to speak on the public forum. Part of the agenda. And this is not to be confused with the public hearing, which is going to happen afterwards. Would anybody like to speak on the public forum, uh, public?
Yeah, sorry, I think I sent up the wrong one.
Sure.
So Dennis Teats, County Commissioner, District One. Just give you a couple things going on in the county. First of all, last Wednesday, we met at New Prague Fire Department. We had a county officials meeting there. I want to thank Chief Steve Verinda and Brett Steer for doing an awesome job. They demonstrated the drone that you guys have are drones. Um, and it can be very beneficial to your city, our county, and neighboring counties. So thank again, uh, Chief Verinda. I've been getting a lot of phone calls. We've got an intersection 28 and 3 where we've had numerous accidents. I'll assure you that our county engineer is working on this along with Sheriff Mason. Um, a lot of these accidents are happening because of speed and distracted driving. Our county engineer is looking at possibly putting a approaching traffic lights indicating people there's traffic coming and that, uh, you should probably look better or stop. Um, one thing people don't know, me included, was a roundabout you're looking at probably north of 1.5 million. So we're, we're trying a lot of options and hopefully we can take care of this. A lot of the incidents or accidents that did happen is when the roundabout at 28 and 13 was going on, that was a detour for that. So obviously they had more accidents back when they were working on that roundabout. Um, our county engineer is pretty, um, does not want to do a four-way stop. We, we talked about that. He thinks that might do more harm than good, but again, he's looking into that. I'm part of the EMS board. Uh, Region Seven. Um, we get grant money, uh, which is your area here. Um, we get approximately $3,000 a month on TZD shifts. That's a seatbelt. So obviously people are still not buckling up, which we need to encourage people to do more of that. But if you know of anybody or if you see people that are not having car seats in their car and they're in a hardship, you can reach out to me or our region and they'll be sure to give you one. I think you gotta watch like an hour video. Um, and they're also looking at ATVs. You're seeing more ATVs with kids riding without helmets. So they're possibly looking at if funding keeps coming in and they're not, uh, spending it on car seats, maybe we can start giving some helmets away for these kids to wear. Um, the legislature is probably going to pass a statewide rifle hunt where you can use rifles anywhere in the state. Um, but they are leaving it up to each county to either take action on that or not. We decided we were not going to take action on that at this time. Um, we want to know, and there's, I believe, Blue Earth County, Sibley County are letting people, if this does pass, they will be able to use a rifle. Um, but as of right now, we're, we said no to that and it's something that we can go back and look back in the future. It just, if we pass it, how do you come back and not do it? So, um, yeah, I think that's about it going in the township. Anything we can do to help you out? Please reach out.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, just clarify again, this part is for the public forum. So if you have anything you'd like to bring up or talk freely about any item that's not on the agenda, uh, this is the time you can do it. Vince?
Uh, Vince Maloney. I live at 506 Seventh Street Northeast. Um, I have a concern with the, uh, the street in front of my house. There's a, uh, a dip there. And, uh, you got a truck pulling a trailer and it hits the dip and it makes a pretty good bang. Um, other neighbors have complained about it. And then also, um, when the road construction was done two years ago, three years ago, my driveway, um, I can't get my boat in it. Backing in my pontoon scrapes the driveway. The road dips right where my driveway starts to go up. So the trailer wheels on my boat or my trailer won't. You know, so my driveway is a lot lower than all the other driveways around. I don't know why that is. It's just my driveway. But I talked to Ken Stika here before he retired and, um, it sounded like he really wanted to do too much because he was retiring. So I just kind of let it go and all right, all right, I'll put up with it or I'll, you know, jack the boat up on the trailer to get pontoons up, but that's not working. So, uh, and then, um, even a car, when you pull a car in there at, um, somewhat of a speed, it'll scrape the front spoiler underneath there. And sometimes you have to do that because there's cars coming. And it's a pretty bad road as far as speed. So I just wondering if the city can do anything about those, my driveway and the whole out front. So that's all I got.
Thanks Vincent. Um, and just to clarify for everybody, the council doesn't deliberate. We're here to listen, but I'm sure that, um, Matt will and Mr. Drake will
Take notes.
Take a note and
Yep.
Get back to you on that and take a look at it and probably talk to you more directly about it. I have Miles Pavik. Did you want to speak at this or at the, uh, public hearing? Gary Waiters? Okay. Rosie, did you want to speak at the other one or this one? Neither?
Neither.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Um, Jay Pexa maybe?
The other one.
Okay, thank you. Austin, the other one too? We should have put better. Ethan? Max? Neither? Okay. And Brian and Joel, I think wanted the next one. Right, okay. Anyone else want to talk? Anyone online that wanted to talk on the public forum section of this meeting? Okay, the next item is public hearing, item number five on the agenda. I'd like to take a motion to open the public hearing on the CIP plan and the issuance of the general obligation bonds relevant to Resolution 25-0602-02, approving a capital improvement plan and giving preliminary approval to the issuance of capital improvement plan bonds and Resolution Number 25-0602-03, providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation capital improvement bonds, Series 2025A, in the maximum, maximum aggregate amount of 10,000, 10,000,415,000 dollars. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
A motion's been made and seconded. Is there any questions or comments or discussion?
Yes, I would like to provide some comments because I know that many of you are here because of the issuing of the bonds for the new police station. I just wanted to let everyone know that, um, we as a council did not take the decision for the new police station lightly. As a matter of fact, we conducted a facility study in 2022 with the final, um, uh, issuance of the outcome of that study in November of 2023. So this has been going on for a number of years. So I wanted to read from the facility study specifically about the police station. The current space is inadequate for current staffing. There's no place to add additional officers. The lobby is lacking in privacy and security. We need to have interview rooms in this area. Space that was used as garage space has been converted to offices. Investigators are in an open space with no privacy. There's no space for evidence processing. The garage is used. This does not meet current best practices for police facilities. Evidence storage is adequate, but could be improved. Inadequate garage space for vehicles. Many have to park outside in the elements. Lack of larger meeting space for training and outside organizational meetings. Lacks space for tactical equipment and training. Needs space for dogs until animal control can pick up. Also, men and women have to share a locker room. There is only one bathroom within the police office space. Um, there is no place for duty bags. Um, are, we have now two detectives and there's only office space for the one detective, which is probably about a six by six uh, room with no windows. We have, as stated, we have no way to expand to add additional officers, which we know as a city, we're going to grow and we're going to need additional officers. The final, um, comment that was made in the facility study is the existing police facility is beyond its useful life and should be replaced in lieu of additions and renovations. So this is a study by a third party, um, working with structural engineers and other, uh, experts in the area. So it was not something that the city conducted on their own. So I just wanted to provide this information as education to let everyone know that this decision was not made overnight. Um, it, we worked on it for a number of years. Um, a firm that is, that went through the whole design phase, et cetera, et cetera, provided many, um, uh, presentations on the proposed facility. All of this information is, was public and is public. And so we're not, um, hiding anything from the public. Um, our meeting minutes are published in the newspaper. They're available online. Uh, any requests for, uh, public documents can be made. So we're not just pushing something through. Um, and I just want to let everyone know that, you know, we're very conscientious about the cost, which is only going to increase in the future. Um, and felt that at this time it was good to move forward with it based on the fact that the estimated budget for the new police station, um, was higher than the bids that came in. So we are in a position to spend about, um, three, two to three million less because of the, the bids that came in. So just wanted to pass an information on, uh, in case that, um, affects any comments that we hear tonight. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion regarding the motion?
I, um, yes, I do. Um, yes, we did talk about the facility study and, um, there was a lot of ideas kicked around, uh, about, uh, facilities, that the fact that, uh, even this building is antiquated and that we needed, uh, there was talk at one time that we were going to include a police station with a new, um, uh, with a new government center as well. Um, I believe that it, while it is not ideal, we did make some upgrades for evidence. Um, as far as the privacy issue, I always found that to be a little odd in the sense that for only eight hours a day, uh, there's two record technicians that don't sit in that office. They sit up front. Um, there is a chief and a detective, each whom has an office and then two patrol, um, officers on during the day. That's for eight hours. The other 16, there's two police officers that are on duty. Um, now granted, for a short period of time, it could be changed over and shifts and everything else, but for the most part, uh, and even those two police officers, uh, should be out patrolling or if one might have to come in to do paperwork, even if they're both in at the same time, it doesn't seem like it's a whole lot. The whole idea was, yes, we do know as, as this city grows and we add more police officers that eventually we will need this, but we have not added police officers since we did that study. We're still at 12 people in the department. Um, and as we've seen, the city has, the growth in the city has drastically slowed down from where it once was. Um, so again, it's, uh, mine and a lot of other people's that to spend, uh, 10 and a half million dollars at this point, um, for, is more of a want than necessarily a need. Um, it's not ideal. Uh, I'll just use an example. In my office, the other day I took a personal phone call. I had to step out of the room and went outside into the parking lot and used my phone. I mean, that's just, a lot of people have to do that. Um, I don't think that puts any undue extra burden on anybody if they have to go to their car to make a personal phone call or want to step out into the parking lot. Um, uh, for $10 million, I don't need another office to go into and close the, uh, the door. Um, anyways, that's just my feeling. I think a lot of people feel that same way too. Um, that, uh, eventually we will need it. Um, as of right now, to build to the excess that we did, we asked them a couple of times, everybody on this board, is there a way we could skinny it down? They never skinnied it down. It stayed at 12 million dollars. Yes, the bids came in a little under that, uh, as of right now, but if I remember right, we wanted to see if we could get it for 6 million or 7 million. And everybody was comparing it to new facilities that were, that Montgomery had put up for a third of that. Um, and then I heard from people that looked at the plans and put bids in, um, to the general contractor for electrical and there was top of the line everything. Um, and he said, you wouldn't believe. He said, I could save a third of it right there. I asked him how much that would be approximately out of, let's just say 10 million. So we could do the math easy. He thought electrical is probably 10% of that overall budget. If he could have saved, which would be a million dollars. If he could have saved a third, that would be $300,000 just by doing something a little bit more, um, it's the right word I'm looking for, just a little bit, uh, not top of the line, but, uh, and then you just extrapolate that out when you do plumbing, when you do, uh, the stonework, when you do the parking lot. If those type of savings can come in too, just like the, one little part of the electrical, uh, the HVAC, everything else, um, you're looking at where we were, where we could have got it into that maybe six or $7 million range and had a decent new facility, um, that we could grow, once the city grows, that we could expand on or build out. Um, but the architect firm was never interested in really coming back to us for, with a new, a new proposal or a skinny down proposal. So I think that's where a lot of people, uh, got upset, but that's my point.
I guess my, what I got to say about it is, you know, it's needed. You go downstairs, it looks like Barney Fife is going to come out and help you. You know, it's, what, 1920? Um, everything that you said in that letter about us not taking the appropriate time to study it and do our, um, uh, our, uh, uh, investigation on it. I don't know, Sean, you, you, so far, I just want to say we need the police department. And it's time that we get it going on. We have been working on it for two and a half years.
I'm just going to ask for a point of order here and make sure that we stay on topic. This is a motion hearing. Any other comments or discussion directly about the hearing?
Right to.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
You don't want the public hearing?
Are we? Oh, that's for the public hearing. I'm sorry. Yes, I do. I wanted to make a comment on Rick's, but since the point of order was made, I refrained from that, but I wanted to speak on that.
Public hearing is now open. Uh, first of all, I want to apologize for Mr. Paulson and Mr. Wallen who came to the last scheduled hearing that we scheduled, but didn't actually do. So I apologize if you intended to speak on the issue at that time and didn't get the opportunity to do it. So, sorry. Uh, I'm first going to call up Rebecca Kurtz from ILS to go over the again from the last, uh, and update us on that. And then I'll invite people that are interested to speak to, to speak at the hearing. Becky?
Good evening, Rebecca Kurtz from ILS. Um, there are two documents related to what I'm going to talk about this evening. Um, the first one is the capital improvement plan. It is very similar to what was presented back in March. I want to make, um, note though, that I did make a couple updates to that. First of all, I reduced, um, the maximum amount to tie with the bids and where the project actually is. Um, the second piece of that is I did, um, update the numbers to reflect the paid 25 values. When we were here in March, the county had not finalized paid 25 values. So the report that you have today does, um, include the, the tax rates for paid 25 instead of 24. Um, other than that, most of the report here then has not changed. Again, um, under Minnesota law, there are minimal, minimum, minimal ways that you can issue debt for, um, buildings, public buildings such as police stations, fire stations, city halls. Issuing through a capital improvement plan bond is one way to do a general obligation bond with that. And so the CIP document or capital improvement plan document that you have before you this evening outlines, um, the statutory requirements for that. It talks about, um, some of the specifics. It is a five-year plan. However, I do want to note that only the police station and only the project in 2025 is identified in the plan. There are no, um, future projects identified with the use of capital improvement plan bonds. Um, I also want to just call out a couple of the numbers that were updated when we had, um, 25 market value and tax rate information with a capital improvement plan bond, um, the total amount, one of the requirements is the total amount of outstanding debt cannot exceed your debt limit as set by Minnesota. For the city of New Prague, that, um, total, uh, debt, debt limit number is, um, 33 million, about 33.4 million dollars, just under that. Um, as of May 28th, when this report was updated, the city had, um, $1,939,000 subject to that statutory debt limit. And so if you add, and I rounded, um, to allow a little cushion, if you add an additional 11 million, then there still is approximately 20.46 million that would be available, um, with your statutory debt limit. So I share that just to put in context that there is, you are not maxing out your debt limit, um, with this project. The second piece of this that was updated is, um, the CIP Act or legislation also requires that the total amount of principal and interest payable in any single calendar year on a capital improvement bond cannot exceed 0.16% of the city's total estimated market value. And so again, using updated, um, market values and tax rates, um, the maximum debt service that you would be allowed for a capital improvement plan bond is, um, 1.78 million. And again, um, that is, there is a preliminary debt schedule in the back of the capital improvement plan. And it is about 660,000 is the estimated debt service. So again,
That's annual, correct?
Annual, yes, annual debt service. So, um, again, well within that annual maximum of 1.78. Um, we are, we are estimating that debt service would be, um, right around 660 annually. Um, along with that, the, and I'm happy to answer, um, questions on either one of these, but the second document that you have is a pre-sale report that if you choose to move, um, forward this evening, it would call for the sale of bonds. And with that, again, it has been updated, um, to reflect the 10,415,000, um, general obligation bonds. It is structured, um, as we saw the last one, the amount is slightly less because with timing, um, there would not be an interest payment due, um, the first interest payment has been pushed out. So that slightly reduced the number that we had looked at before. Um, although the structure still does, um, reflect using 380,000, um, in cash to reduce, um, reduce a portion of the bond issuance that is reflected in here. Um, as we've talked about before, if you do go forward with issuing a capital improve, general obligation capital improvement plan bond, um, it does count against that net debt, debt limit. Those were the numbers that I, um, outlined that you would still have over $20 million available. Um, we are proposing a 30-year term for this debt. Um, with that, principal would be in 2027. We would look at bonds maturing in 2055. However, um, the bonds would be subject to, um, they would be callable in 2035, which means that at that point in time, um, if you had money, you could pay them off in, in full or in part. Or if interest rates, um, had dropped and there was some interest savings with refunding the bonds at a lower interest rate, you would have the ability to do that for some additional savings. Um, we did go through a rating process, um, tied with the street bonds that were issued and awarded previously. Um, the city's current bond rating is a double A from Standard and Poor's. Um, with that, and I'm happy again to go into more detail in the pre-sale report, um, if you do have questions. But if you do decide to move forward this evening, there is a 30-day, um, reverse referendum period. So we are looking, or I am proposing to have a bond sale on July 21st. Um, I recognize that is about your, your meeting right after the 30-day reverse referendum period would be July 7th. Um, with that meeting coming right off a long weekend and the July 4th holiday, um, we do have a little question about the bond interest, um, just after a long weekend. So if you wanted, we could sell on July 7th. We are recommending, um, consider July 21st just because that would put it in time where people, underwriters would not be coming off a long holiday weekend and, um, possibly have a little more interest in them because there would be a little more time to review. Um, but I'm happy to answer more questions related to that. Um, after the hearing, there are two resolutions. Um, the first one that you can consider does approve that capital improvement plan bond, or capital improvement plan and allow for the issuance of debt. And then if you choose to do so, the second resolution would actually call for the specific issuance of the bonds and start that process. Um, I'm happy to answer questions right now where I will be around for the hearing if there are questions that come up at a later time.
Thank you. Any questions of, uh, ILS? Josh, anyone? Thank you. All right, this is the, uh, continue, the public hearing portion. I just want to mention that it's your opportunity. Anyone can express their opinions. I have two lists here, but even if you're not on the list, you're certainly free to come and, uh, speak. I have two lists here, but even if you're not on the list, you're certainly free to come and speak. Give you the opportunity to speak. Counsel, as I mentioned, does not deliberate, so if you ask questions, don't expect an answer. We're here to hear or listen to what we have to say. And go from there. I have two lists, and Brian, you're the first one on this one list. Do you wanna go first, or?
Sure.
Otherwise, I can take somebody off this list.
I do like to go last, but. Brian Paulson, two zero six Fourth Street, Southwest. Council members, just a quick couple of things before I start. I do believe that that report was done by Wald that Councilmember Bass referenced, who makes more money, the more money that we spend, I believe. And then the cost increase in the future, it's the reason that in the past, it would have been cheaper because our incomes are cheaper, and in the future, it'll be more expensive, just like our incomes are more expensive, or we get paid more. So yes, that is true, but all things are relative. Let's see here. Good evening, council members. I'm here specifically respectfully oppose the bond resolution for the around eleven million dollar police station project and urge you to delay or reject it until residents have had a meaningful say. Your stance that the project is proceeding regardless makes it feel like a formality. Residents deserve better. You framed this hearing as a chance to choose funding mechanisms like SIP bond financing, unlike other public hearings for rezoning or backyard chickens that we just had, which seek public opinion, and those are from some city staff directly. I disagree with that stance. Minnesota statute four seven five, fact twenty-one, subsection three, requires public hearings for capital improvement bonds to gather input on the project's needs, size, and scope, not just the funding mechanism. The League of Minnesota Cities Handbook for Minnesota Cities, chapter seven, notes that hearings allow residents to, quote, "express support or opposition," unquote, and provide, quote, "additional information," unquote. This isn't about selecting a payment method, it's about a community's, our community's future, whether the scope or timeline fits our needs. You haven't saw resident input through the city's newsletter or social media, unlike the widely shared park survey that just went out. Or the, the school district, for example, was the same contractor, Wald, did, I believe, five planning sessions with residents. I think they had thirty people that wanted to join. All thirty were allowed to join these five sessions where they toured the facilities and came up with priorities. Instead, you signed a contract without a funding contingency after violating the statute, skipping the required hearing. And then you didn't pause the builder after that. The builder then erected fencing, moved in a trailer, and placed a dumpster, risking higher exit costs before residents could even speak. This undermines transparency. You and city staff point to past meetings claiming years of discussion, but when were residents invited to discuss the need or scope? I propose a delayed resolution to hold community planning sessions like the schools, tie contracts to resident-approved funding. It's also concerning that you extend the bond term to thirty years from twenty-five, adding around two million dollars in interest for a mere around ten dollars a month savings, burdening future revenues, residents that fit in that five-year gap that happened to move here during that time. I urge you to delay this or reject this resolution, utilize the exit clause in the contract. And if this is approved, I am informing you that I am coordinating volunteers to gather signatures needed for petition to force public vote, ensuring that our voices are heard. Let's make New Prague's future reflect a shared vision. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wallen, would you like to go next?
My name is Joel Wallen, seven one six Main Street East, New Prague. I didn't prepare any remarks today, so I'm gonna be pretty brief. Councilman Ryan, I believe the word that you were looking for is austere, which is the word, the word austerity. The rest of this country is going through a period of austerity. I know I'm experiencing austerity in my own budget. Our federal government is supposed to be, as promised, in instituting austerity measures. As of last week, it didn't seem like they were, they were actually doing what they promised, but I would urge all of you to understand that I don't believe that spending eleven million dollars on the Taj Mahal of police stations is austerity in any measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Miles Pavick, did you wanna speak now?
Nope.
Gary Whitis, would you like to?
Good evening. Gary Whitis, fourteen oh six Ninth Street Southeastern, New Prague. I wanna speak a little bit about what it says right on that wall there, a tradition of progress. Many years ago, the city of New Prague built a sewage treatment plant that was state-of-the-art. What, twenty years later, it's still state-of-the-art? You didn't look for, to get the cheap way out. You looked to do it for the future, and it worked. Many years ago, the city built a new fire hall. And they didn't build a pole barn. It isn't just a place to store trucks. It's something to be proud of. And I would be willing to bet that our chief has no problem recruiting firefighters because they have something they can be proud of, and they do a great job protecting our, our town. We have a golf course. My question is, when was the last time the golf course showed a profit? But the taxpayers still support that golf course because it's good for the city, isn't it? And it's gonna be good for the city in the future. And I feel the same way about the police department. We need to support our police officers. We need to have something we can be proud of, not a pole building to store squad cars. We don't need to cheapen it up. If we're gonna do it, we need to do it right, don't we? It's a tradition of progress. I think we need to continue that tradition and move forward with this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jay Pex, I think?
My name is Jay Pex. I live at three oh three Fiddler Court in town. I've spent the greater part of thirty-five years building Class A buildings, which we're obviously wanting to put up. It is the Taj Mahal. I've never heard of anybody building a ten and a half million dollar building for four people to be here. This, there, there isn't what, four or five, excuse me if I'm wrong, but I thought there was four or five that are gonna be in there all day, every day? This building could be a third of what it is, and still the lights will come on, the doors will go on, people can do whatever, but twelve million dollars? I built doctors' clinics and offices in school buildings and didn't put this kind of money into a building. It's fine if we're gonna need it somewhere down the future to put it together, and if this building has to go with it, why don't we just wait till this all has to happen? I've always told my family, I said, it's not about we won't be able to afford our house in this town because that'll go away. The payment will go away. What we won't be able to afford are the taxes because you don't stop. You continually add. This will be on everybody's taxpayer, the rest of their natural life and then some. It can be reduced. Give me that plan. I'll value-engineer that building, and the lights will still come on, and everybody will have what they want. But you have to listen to what we're saying. Nobody's seen the plan. And I know you had said that we can go here, there. I don't do social media. I don't do it. I don't get anything. But it should have been sent out a long time ago when this started to the people of our age. And I live in a whole neighborhood of people like this. They have no more money to give us. They have no more money to give you, and nobody seems to take that into consideration. There's probably what, thirty-five, forty percent of the population in this town is retired. Go to church. Go to Etlens. Go to the fishtail. There's a lot of retired people in this town, and they're living on fixed incomes. You're digging up streets, those people are gonna get sixteen thousand dollars or whatever added to theirs, plus the taxes are going up ten percent next year for whatever happened there. And now we're gonna throw another large percent of this for, again, the rest of our natural lives? People have to look at this. I think of everybody in this town, every business in this town is gonna have to raise their price to the point where we won't be able to go out for dinner. We won't be able to go uptown and have a beer. It's all gonna have to be really, really looked at how we're gonna spend the few bucks that we're gonna have. And I live in a neighborhood of all of them, and they're very concerned about this. There's something we can do about this. Like I said, I'll value-engineer that building for you, and it won't be anywhere near ten million dollars, but the lights will still come on.
Thank you. Austin?
Austin Revel, two 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 Second Avenue, Southwest. I'm one of the business owners here in town, and I'm here to support this. You know, full disclosure, obviously I have a personal connection to this. My wife is a police officer here in town. And, you know, to me, one of the things that I value most is having the symbolism of what we value. When you walk into someone's home, you can see what they value, right, by what they have on the walls, the things they highlight. And police stations are one of those symbols. We saw what happens just five years ago when you let one burn. Right? Let's show what we value in this town. We have an awesome fire station. I think it looks amazing. It's time that we have value the police department in the same way. I say that as a gun shop owner, noticing stuff getting closer and closer to home is getting a little uncomfortable when you see some of the things propping up in Jordan, in Elko New Market. So let's make that symbol that we take this seriously. Another thing, too, that was obviously mentioned is female spaces. There should be some, and there is none currently. And then also as a gun shop owner, I am worried about rights. Fifth Amendment rights are very important, and there should be a space when you go in and go in for an interview or have your lawyer come in and speak to you, because even suspects get those rights as well as they're afforded. And we should have that space. We don't currently have the facility to do so. I do believe that this is the, again, a tradition of progress, but it's also building for twenty years, thirty years, kinda like the water treatment plant. Let's get this done and just move on, because there's gonna be other things we have to do. We put this off for far too long, and I think it's time we address it. Thank you.
Ethan Unger, did you wanna speak?
Ethan Unger, five hundred Highview Circle. And I am with Sean Ryan. I think we should take the architect and maybe find a different one that will trim it down because I can barely afford my taxes the way they are on a fixed income with four people to feed every day, so I sharply oppose with it, but I support the officers.
Thank you. That's all I have on my list. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes.
Good evening, council members. My name is Danielle Peterson. Address eleven oh one Water Street Northwest, Scott County. I'd like to say I'm in favor for the new cop shop, if they can trim the fat. Or we need, you know, watch out for taxes for everyone, fixed income or whatever. My dad was a cop. They put in a new cop shop way later, but it benefited the city. And I think this town does need something for, you know, every detective personnel, male, female. And I think, you know, traditional progress, you've gotta move forward. So I'm in favor for the new business here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Todd Klein. I'm at fourteen oh two Tenth Street Circle Southeast. First off, I'd like to kinda give a background on myself. I am a commercial painting contractor, so I am in the commercial industry as far as buildings go. And I kinda have a background on estimating, project management, and ten point four million dollars, I just got done with Scott Equipment for a K WIT in town here, and that building has occupancy of, I believe it's forty. And I could be wrong. I'm just throwing out a number here. But I believe that went for under three million dollars, that building. And I believe that was with land as well. So my opinion on the value of ten point four million dollars in comparison to that building kinda makes my head spin a little bit on where that dollar value came from and why it's up to ten point four million. I too would like to look at a set of plans as far as what this police station actually is in detail. What has elevated that cost? Again, I would love to look at that, and I'm not about value engineering. I do value engineering in my business. And a lot of times, it's saving ten to twenty percent on a building or a facility. I believe that this station, value engineering doesn't mean that it takes a luster out of a project. What it does is it makes it feasible. It makes it very compliant with what is needed. And I think that a few people tonight have spoken on the fact that a tradition of progress, I believe in that as well. But it can be done at a value, too. My other concern with this project is future ramifications with it. I know the school is looking into more funding, and I believe this passing is gonna have a direct reflect on people's opinions on that as far as moving forward with that. I'm just wondering, where's the balancing, balancing act coming from? How is that gonna play out? I believe that the future is in the schools. I think everybody would probably agree upon that. I also think that the future is in protecting and serving the public. Again, there's a balancing act between the two of them. So that being said, I strongly oppose this police station. I believe that there's some value that can be made that would make it agreeable in this community and not cheapen it up. It could be value engineered, and everybody can get kinda what they want. That's all I have tonight, people.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Vince Maloney, five oh six Seventh Street Northeast. I am on a fixed income. You just gotta cut back. I mean, stuff is gonna go up in price. It has our whole lives. No, I can't go downtown and drink a beer out of the bar.
Vince, 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 you can speak to us.
I'm sorry?
You can speak to us.
Okay. So I'm in favor of the police station, and that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? With no other people in the audience signaling a desire to give comment, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing on the CIP plan and the issuance of the general obligation bonds relevant to resolution.
Point of order. Did you wanna check just to make sure there was no one online?
I'm sorry? No one online? With no other people in the audience or online signaling a desire to give comment, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing on the CIP plan and the issuance of general obligations bonds relevant to resolution twenty-five oh six oh two oh two, approving a capital improvement plan and giving preliminary approval to the issuance of capital improvement plan bonds and resolution twenty-five dash oh six oh two oh three, providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation capital improvement plan bonds, series two thousand twenty-five A in the maximum aggregate amount of ten million four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
So moved.
Well, this is just closing the public hearing, right?
Yes.
Yes, alright, second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion passed. Public hearing is now closed.
I have some more questions.
Yes, do you have a question, Sean?
Yes, several. So I believe that we are, that there's gonna be a group of people that will find the required two hundred and forty, whatever it was, two twenty signatures to force a referendum vote. I think it would, it's important for the council to recognize that. And then the fact that we are one person short now, that we should tap the brakes a little bit and slow this process down because if we continue to spend more money or allow the contract, contractor to spend more money, it not only goes against the will of what I believe is the majority of residents of New Prague, but it's gonna force the hand of this council in such a way that they're not gonna be able to backtrack from it if we don't invoke the clause right now that stops. To Brian's point, they've already put up, they've already started working. I don't blame the contractor that might be looking that this thing might not go through. But I would like to get a total of what we're looking at right now, Josh, with
But I would like to get a total of what we're looking at right now, Josh, with what has been done, um, that theoretically that we cannot get back if we stop this. The plans that we paid for are the plans. We could build this five years from now with those plans if we so moved or wanted to. We own those plans. So if anything, we've saved the money on, on the engineering fees. That doesn't mean we necessarily have to do it, um, or we could look at ways of then possibly redoing it at a cheaper rate. But um, where are, what are we at right now to your best?
So that I don't, I, that is certainly something the council wishes to do. I can reach out. I know as, as they've been ordering stuff, I'm sure there's been costs that are incurred. So I do not know that exact number of what's been spent to this point. Usually our first invoice, I'm guessing, would roll in here either mid to late month in June is usually how those work.
Has the contractor been communicated to as far as the fact that this could go either way?
The contractor has been communicated with that the council voted to approve the contract, which since that is where we currently stand.
Back in April.
Direction by the council to do anything else.
Okay, but we did last acknowledge at the last meeting two weeks ago that it's very likely that this will be put to a referendum vote and that it could very well easily fail if we let the taxpayers have their say in it. Does that not mean that we should contact the contractor and tell him to stop and put it on hold before we spend any more money?
I guess I take direction from the council as a whole, and they have not.
Well, then I'm asking that question to the council.
Well, I can respond at my opinion on it. This, this, the exact same questions you're asking, we talked about last meeting. And um, the attorney reviewed what the circumstances would be if you tried to get out of the signed contract and not only the liability uh, part of it, but the actual cost then of breaking the contract in addition to the money that's already been spent for a contract that was approved earlier. So I'm not sure the issues that you're bringing up now are any different than were discussed the last time.
There was no dollar figure though that was actually given. And then there is some, uh, according to the way I read the contract, um, and I'm not aware if Scott did read the, our contract before that. Uh, I think he was referring almost in general to what would ha, what could happen. Um, but from the, what I saw in the contract, it does look like there is an out or a clause that we can change or stop. I don't have it exactly.
There is an out clause, and it would be, to my understanding, um, the expenses to date. But then there is a big unknown because um, Metcon may have turned down other business to take this um, contract that we put out for RFP. Um, so there is some unknown dollar amount that they could then demand, and it would probably involve our city attorney likewise to kind of wade through that bit of unknown. And Josh, that's my understanding on the out clause.
That is my understanding as well.
Thank you.
Oh, unfortunately, I can't read it here, but.
I'll give you a minute if you want to respond, Sean.
Yeah, I would actually. I'll just, this is the highlighted part of the, of what uh, maybe this isn't the contract.
House member Ryan, I have it right here.
You do?
Thank you.
Sean, please address Josh. It's not appropriate for you to stand.
Are, are we, are we looking for contract language? Is that what's being looked at?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got it right here.
I'd like to see that, and I think that is within my right as a council elected official to see that.
No, yeah.
I'm not saying it's not, Sean. I'm just saying it's appropriate for us to, if you're talking to us, then you should involve the city administrator and us.
Okay, I would like to see.
Would you like to read the language?
Yes. Thank you. I don't know if you have the portion that I would want highlighted. Okay. The contract may be terminated by the owner or the contractors provided in Article fourteen. If the contract is terminated for the owner's convenience in accord with Article fourteen, then the owner shall pay the contractor termination fee as pos, as follows. Insert the amount of or method of determining the fee of any payable to the contractor following termination for the owner's convenience. In cases, in case such termination of the owner's convenience, the contractor shall be entitled to receive payment for work executed and reasonable and substantiated costs incurred by reasons for such termination, which is the dollars I'd like to know what that would be before any more additional work is done. That's it. The next one is Article eight miscellaneous provisions. I just read determination.
Yeah.
Section seven.
So it, that Article seven point one point one is that if the city terminates for convenience, then the termination fee, there's a termination fee as follows. Work executed and reasonable and substantiated costs incurred by reason of such termination. So there is that still that unknown, reasonable and substantiated costs incurred for that termination. So that cost to be, could be the cost that, of business that Metcon lost because they took our bid and we awarded the contract.
Well, I think that's, yeah, I think that's where we need our city attorney to find out if that's what that dollar figure could possibly be.
Yeah, it's open to interpretation.
It isn't open, and that's why, that's just some additional information. But at the very least, I don't, I think it should be communicated to the contractor that, hey, we're in this situation that very well could happen, uh, and that we want to pause any or all work right now so we're not incurring any more fees if he starts digging a hole or doing whatever because the plans are there. If that isn't communicated to them via that clause. So again, with us being down one member and with um, a lot of unknowns out there and a very good possibility that they will gather the number of signatures that are required to hold a referendum and then needs to be approved. I think we're putting ourselves in a very dangerous position if we allow the contractor to continue working. My next question would be.
Sean, let me just respond to your first question because I didn't get a chance to finish.
Okay.
What I was saying, but um, I'm not, I'm being totally transparent. My motivation and support of the resolution and the bond, the statute that we're using for the bond, and Ryan, you might just say we're just kind of, I forgot the words you're using, but um, I feel that this is the best way to do it and appropriate financing bond mechanism to do it. And I believe there's a little bit of a cost savings in going this route than the next alternative that we would try doing. And I'm not kidding myself that, and I've, I've done levies myself for the city before and the, what the chances of a referendum approvals are no matter what the circumstances. But I'm not kidding anybody that if, if there was a signature for a reverse referendum, I would support going the next alternative for bonding. We have done a lot of time and study to get to this point, and um, I'm not going to sug, I would not support incurring the liability to the city from not funding it once we've already decided to do the project and there is due diligence in earnest and sincerely to do it. So I, I'm not kidding anybody. If, if we do get a reverse referendum, I would support that we go to the next step and still fund it in whatever way we can instead of trying to, trying to legally get out of the um, what the contract and what the cost of that might be. Nevertheless, it's also, a lot of people you, you're suggesting don't support it, but there certainly are people that do support it too. So I have to take in consideration both sides of it as well as we all have to. So um, that's my response to your earlier question, and you said you had something else that you want to add?
Well, I, mayor members of the council, if I may, I just want to interject. So I'm, uh, I'm not your normal city attorney. My name's Sam Ketchum. I work with, with Scott Riggs, and uh, I have, I wasn't familiar with the contract you were referring to until now. I can tell you that uh, it sounds like uh, city attorney Riggs basically provided an opinion at your previous meeting that the termination fee and the amount of that would be unknown. And the language that you just read, I would have the same exact opinion. So that language and the amount of the termination fee that uh, would be basically um, that the city would be liable for is an unknown. And so you're going to have to decide, I think, tonight what you're going to do with these resolutions with that being an unknown. So I just wanted to throw that out there because that is a part of the discussion and um, but ultimately I, I have the same opinion that Scott did at the previous meeting that, you know, your, your, your liability, your costs, your, for the exit clause, that, that's an unknown, and you're going to have to proceed with these two resolutions with that being an unknown. You're going to have to make a decision about them without, without that information.
But wouldn't you agree that it's only going to go up if work starts in earnest? And then we ultimately decide that?
I, I can't say for sure because we don't have, we don't know what your contractor's going to say in terms of what, what their expenses, their reasonable and substantiated costs are going to be. So it, it really depends on, on, on your, the contractor and, and when, when that would occur.
Okay. So I, several questions. How many days do they have to gather the required signatures?
The reverse referendum period is thirty days from approval of the resolutions.
Which would be from today?
Assuming they're approved tonight, correct?
Okay, I just want to make sure that was clear for, for the people that are against it. And then um, just to comment on Bruce's, I, I know Bruce, you, you believe that this was done with all sincerity and due diligence. I take a different approach from it. This thing got brought up. I know we did the facility study. There was a lot of other things in the facility study um, that needed. We haven't added police officers since that facility was done. I'm not saying it's perfect, but there was much more detail to that facility study than just the police station. And once this all of a sudden popped up last fall, even though there were some reservations amongst the people at this table that that price was really high and we asked to skinny it down, my belief is, is that city staff continued to take the next steps and they never really slowed down. And it just seemed like we just kept, it just went through and through and through, and I was always the one no vote, but everybody else, it just, there, there was like no, as we saw after we asked them to skinny it down, it came back with the exact same price. So I, this, in my mind, this thing has happened like in the last nine months for sure. And to spend this kind of money, I think without the, the public's uh, input, which we know now was a mistake, um, was wrong and that it just, it moved way too quickly, way too fast uh, on a, on a project of this size and scope. That's my personal feeling. I know you disagree with that, and I respect that, but.
Well, this is technical, but just point of clarification, we did approve the council additional police officer that started in a memorandum in October two thousand twenty two, and this project started before that.
That was all I had, thirty days.
Well, you have more opportunity. Next item then is consideration of resolution twenty five oh six oh two oh two.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty five oh six oh two oh two, approving a capital improvement plan and giving preliminary approval to the issuance of capital improvement plan bonds.
Second. Motion's been made and second, seconded any questions or discussion? I just have a couple of comments then to support the resolution. Just referring back to the need, I, I was responding to a resident that inquired to me directly about it, and my response as part of the answer was uh, the need was focused on the deteriorating condition of the building in some places, lack of handicapped accessibility, proper secure storage, space for, space for new officers, private interviews, space security issues, among other issues. And this was just as more, just as important to me as consideration of the future growth of the community, which, which has taken place. Uh, the department has been operating in the same space for over forty years, and part of the space is a converted garage, and it still uh, is a garage, looks like garage. So it's not just the growth of the community either. I um, the activity of our community has changed, um, and I, I think that we've always probably tried to prevent, have prevention as part of our efforts, but I think that's probably more of a focus in the last few years, what we want to do and prevent. It's not just the growth of the community that we're talking about as far as homeowners and home, people that live here, but actually in new businesses, Coburn's, Hy-Vee, and a lot of other commercial industrial, they expect the police service and ask for that service as well. Years ago, someone asked me about QuickTrip. Why do we need a QuickTrip and why do we need another QuickTrip? And all of these are, I think they went to Baker Square at the time or something. But um, my response was, and, and being involved in EDA for many years, it's not the size of the community also that really dictates what people want to do, but the traffic flow. And New Prague has experienced much more traffic flow and in some ways become a destination spot um, as far as major groceries as an example, but also in religious um, things as well. Uh, so our traffic counts certainly have grown up or increased, and that is also affecting the need for police and the number of police officers we have in the facility. And that's what, that is a short answer, one of the reasons why QuickTrip is willing to invest millions of dollars in our community. Some mention about saving dollars in um, doing it later. We, we've had this discussion in the past as the city council, and we talked about this. There's certainly efforts right now to reduce the, reduce inflation. Federal Reserve would like to get it down, but there's no efforts, no efforts to get deflation. There is no efforts to reduce the price. The um, inflation, we talk about disinflation where the increase of prices slows down to get down to two percent. But once you get inflation, you have a, a price level, it's not going to go down, you just slowed the increase of it. So in my mind, there's no way it's going to be cheaper two years from now, a year from now, or three years from now. The, I, people have coined, it wasn't just tonight, but Taj Mahal's been used. I don't view this as a Taj Mahal. I think we did cut it back. We did skinny it down a little bit. It was not as much as you wanted and/or I wanted either at the time. I remember us talking about it. I resolved to accept what was done, and you feel it could have gone down lower. I've been involved in commercial building projects as well, and you can value engineer as well, and that's a possible way. I haven't seen it done in a, in a city situation. Uh, there's different risks involved in that too, is not knowing your exact numbers. School balancing with the school is a very, um, I sincerely, uh, saddened that this might affect that. I totally get it. I uh, I have to wear my hat as a city council, and I view this. I obviously have a personal stake in it too, with my family being involved as employee to the school district, so that affects me too. We did talk about that in the past as the council. I understand the, the terminology of tap it, slow it down, but I do have to go back to the comment that we started this back in two thousand twenty one, and the facility needs were even considered before I got here, before then. And I, I don't think about this as a nine-month project that would really diminish all the efforts that. as a nine-month project that would really diminish all the efforts that were done in '22, '23, and '24 throughout this whole process. During the last election, other elections, and currently you see signs, I've seen signs that say, "Support police" or "We support our law enforcement" or "We stand up for law enforcement." And I wondered myself, what does that all mean to someone when they post a sign? It certainly conveys support to them, but what does it physically, what does it mean to you? In the last two to three years when I've talked to people and people ask me about it, and there's been as many as are in this room or more, I would say the consensus that I've received is that I don't like paying taxes. I don't want my taxes to go up, but if we need it, I want to do it. I think we should do it. And that's generally what I, was a nice way of really defining, for me anyway, what it means to support the police and what we mean to support law enforcement. So I state this in support of the resolution. Any other comments?
I just want to say that in no way does this, anybody that's against this 10 and a half million dollar police station is saying they're not for the police. They're not against, they're not anti-cop by any means whatsoever. There just needs to be some fiscal, what I believe is fiscal responsibility and a lot of other people too. And that does not, I just want to make sure everybody understands this is not, we're not saying that we're anti-police or anti-cop because we don't, can't afford, in some people's minds, afford an $11 million police station.
I didn't mean to infer that, but I was trying to relate what I understood. These people were telling me and part of what they were saying, that they were willing to have their taxes to pay for it in a way to show their support. And that's the feeling that I received from them. That's my personal opinion. That's my inference that I received from those people.
Josh, could you remind me what this is going to just baseline add to our levy? Just off the top, just this, before we've done anything else?
So I believe, admittedly, the last time we ran the numbers, it was using estimates or it was based off of our 2025 levy. So it will change a little bit. Next year would increase tax capacity, but it would roughly increase the levy, summer routine 12% and 15%, depending on where that tax capacity is at. Now, that is the general levy. That doesn't necessarily mean an individual person's taxes will go up. That is the overall levy amount.
And that's without compensation studies and everything else? I mean, there's a lot of things still coming in our budget.
There's a number of things that have already been budgeted for '25, yes. We haven't begun to discuss what would be, this would ultimately be the 2027 budget that this would first take effect.
Okay. Thank you for that. I think it was important that people heard that.
No public input. Nine months.
Shame on you.
Come to a meeting once in a while. Any other comments or questions? This is the Resolution 25060202. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I voted aye as well. Next item is Resolution 25060203.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 25060203, providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation capital improvement plan bonds, Series 2025A, in the maximum of aggregate principal amount of $10,415,000.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any other comments or questions? I do want to respond because I do apologize if you feel you haven't been involved, but I do have to also respect the people that have been engaged for the last two or three years and have voiced their concerns or their support, or as Sean's very well aware, the people that are against it. So I do want to acknowledge all the people and thank those people that have been involved for the last three years in it. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Next item is City Engineering Projects Update.
I don't have anything to add unless you have a question about the memo.
If you give me a second, I'll get to the memo.
Yep.
I can give a recap of it. 2024 project, today you will see a lot of milling going on out there. They're preparing for the second lift that will take place this week, weather permitting. There are still items on the punch list that need to be completed, but I would say they're 90% done with their punch list. 2025 project, Lincoln Avenue North, utility work is completed. Now they will start building a street. The first two blocks are done. So they have from Second to Fifth Street to complete, which would be tile, sand, gravel, and then obviously the curb. Yeah, if you guys have any questions I can answer, it's hard to hear back here. Sorry.
Any comments on it, Josh, or anyone else?
Nope.
Agenda. Item number eight, ordinance for adoption. Josh, do you want to introduce this?
Yes, this is the second reading of the updating our THC ordinance. I will let Ken let you know if he has any updates. Otherwise, I know he stands for questions.
Yeah, I don't have any update on that, but we did publish on our bulletin board and on the website as required by law for 10 days prior to tonight's consideration and following the initial reading at the last council meeting. Again, as a reminder, it was just to allow exclusive liquor store to sell low potency hemp products, which in our ordinance called THC does not include the higher potency items, which the state still at this point does not have the complete process open and available for issuing licenses. So again, low potency at municipal, or excuse me, exclusive liquor stores. So just clarifying that because when we adopted the ordinance initially, it was not allowed.
Just to liquor stores?
It's just for liquor stores.
And this isn't going to be passed and then for one particular store, it's for the...
No, it'd be for all of them.
What is the action? Are we requiring any action tonight on this?
Yes. So it would be approving on second reading, which would be approval for adoption of that change.
Do we need a motion to that effect?
Correct.
So move.
I'll second the adoption of amending ordinance number 356, sections 121.02 and 121.03 of Chapter 121.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any other questions or discussions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Item number nine, Resolutions 25060204. Josh, do you want to introduce the item?
Yes. Resolution 25060204 is declaring a vacancy to exist in the office of the mayor and providing for the appointment thereof. Just as a quick recap, Mayor Dwayne Jurick did resign his post here about a week and a half ago, Thursday. And so per our city charter, Section 2.05, the city council shall basically declare the post vacant and then shall look to appoint somebody into that role. Due to the office being open for less than two years, it would be, the charter provides for the appointment of the position by the city council, not a special election for that seat. And so I provided two resolutions for you. Resolution 25060204A basically says that the seat is vacant and the city council will look, where is that? And the city council will look to find a replacement. We can certainly discuss how we could go about finding that. 25060204B would be the option if the city council knows who it would like to appoint. And we can certainly do that tonight as well. Speaking with City Attorney Scott Riggs, either he worked, I worked with him to put both of these resolutions together to kind of give the city council an option of just kind of how I would like to proceed here. According to our city charter, this is certainly up to the discretion of the city council as to how the appointment is filled. So I can try to answer any questions you may have. And I'm sure Sam here can help me as well if we have questions.
So if we were just to move the vice president into the mayor position, if he wants it, I'm not trying to imply anything, Bruce, but I think he'd, then we would, could we then interview for, or would we have to interview for Bruce's position?
Yes. So if for some reason any city council member was basically appointed in the position, the city council then would be tasked with appointing a person to fill that seat until, and then this is where it gets a little bit dicey. So if it was, in this particular instance, if it was Councilman Bass or Councilman Siler, they have also a year and a half left. So we would appoint somebody into that position to fulfill the remainder of their term. If it was yourself, Sean, or Councilman Wolf, then the city council would appoint somebody into that seat until a special election was held to permanently put somebody in there. Speaking with Scott Riggs, that can either happen basically at the next November, or most cities will many times wait until the next general city election. So it would be appointing somebody for a year and a half, and then a special election would be run for a two-year term to fill that seat for the remainder of the two-year term. Either way, yes. To answer your question, a city council member could be appointed in the position and then we'd be looking to appoint somebody into that city council member position.
And the vice president should take the position, but I could see you don't want to be mayor forever. I mean...
So I mean, I guess the city charter does not say that the person should. It says that the vice president will act as the mayor when the mayor is not available. So in this instance, because we do not have an available mayor, the acting vice president will run the meetings. And then yes, should that person be appointed or want it, they say they can certainly have it, but they don't have to have it. It could come from any city council member or it could come from without, is it without the right word, outside of the city council.
So I think the first is that we declare the vacancy.
That is correct.
Of the seat. So I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 25060204A, declaring the vacancy to exist in the office of mayor and providing for the appointment thereof.
Second.
Mayor, members of the council, let's have a quick clarification. So both of these resolutions actually declare the vacancy. So it's either or, not one and then two. So...
Thank you.
Nope, that's right. Yeah. So we set this up so that A would declare the vacancy and then allow the council to discuss how it wants to fill and go forward. B would declare the vacancy. And if the council has somebody in mind that they would like to reach out to, to appoint, that's what you would use B for if there's already a person who you'd want to put in there already. Does that make sense?
That makes sense, but I don't know that we've had any discussion about who that person may be. So I don't know if we pass the Resolution 05. It's 05 on the agenda, but it's 04B. So...
Mayor, members of the council, I think this might help understand the two resolutions. So both declare the vacancy. One, basically direct staff to provide a process for filling the vacancy by appointment. The second, 04B, basically just has a blank. So if you know who you want to appoint as to serve the remainder of the unexpired term, you would adopt 04B with a specific name. So just to be clear, both declare vacancy. They're essentially the same resolution, but 104A directs the staff to fill that by appointment and bring someone back for the council's consideration. But 04B basically appoints a specific person.
Yeah, and I think that discussion would just happen tonight before you approved it. So if somebody up there knew who we wanted to put in there, then we would just move forward with B. If we didn't know after discussion, we'd move forward with A.
Thank you.
I do have a question. If we were to pick somebody outside of the council, so we don't mess up our terms and all that stuff, somebody like Nicolai or somebody who passed government mayor?
Yeah, that's...
Is that what you're talking?
Yeah. So if the council came forward and decided, we're just going to stretch this way back instead of using names, George Washington, we wanted to appoint George Washington as our mayor, they would use B to declare the vacancy and appoint George Washington. We would then reach out to George Washington and see if George Washington wanted to be mayor. Assuming they did, they would, that person would then come back, be sworn in as the mayor, and we'd move forward. If they didn't want to, we'd be back to square A. Vacancy's already declared. We just wouldn't have a mayor. So we'd be almost defaulting to A at that point and coming up with a process for how we will fill the mayor's seat.
I guess I'd like to see the vice president take the mayor position if he'd like to. And then I'd like to open it up to the public and do a series of interviews for people that would want to fulfill his council seat until the next election. If, Bruce, are you interested in it? Or I don't know if you even are, but...
My position would be, I would only have an interest if we couldn't find someone that, I do feel like there's a qualified person, at least one, that would do it. And I do, I would recommend Chuck Nicolai to do it since he was our previous mayor, as someone that we could discuss and do it. And if there weren't, then I would consider it. But my preference would not, to take advantage of someone that can provide some consistency and not, and maintain, that's been here before. You want the job or what?
Would you do it? Would you do it for us?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
All right. Well, I will take that motion off the table of approving Resolution 25060204A and instead make a motion to approve Resolution 25060204B, declaring the vacancy and providing for the appointment thereof.
Chuck Nicolai. I'd second that. And then, I guess I'll ask our attorney this. Is this effective immediately or is there a timeframe? Or do we expect him to jump up here and...
I actually went through this with another city recently and I didn't think that they'd maybe need to jump up. I think it takes effect immediately, but I don't think that the new mayor needs to jump up right now and run the meeting, if that's what you mean.
He's got to be sworn in or...
That's correct. Thank you. Yeah.
Can we change the resolution to be effective the next city council meeting?
The resolution is fine as in front of you. As one of the council members pointed out, the mayor will need to be sworn in. So that'll likely occur at the next meeting.
Oh, I see. Okay.
And at that time, the mayor will take the...
Pomp and circumstance can start that.
Thank you.
I believe there's a motion on the floor and seconded, correct?
Yes.
For 25060204B with insertion of Chuck Nicolai as being appointed to serve the remainder of the unexpired term of Mayor Dwayne J. Jurick. Any comments or further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Congratulations. Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you, Chuck.
Just when you thought you were home, you got to go back in.
I actually told you that was going to happen.
Did you guys ask him beforehand?
No.
I thought he was here for the...
I didn't ask him to come. He came on.
No, I think it's great.
Come in wearing a derby and say, "All right, I'll take that seat." Next item is Resolution 25060205, proven variance. Josh, do you want to introduce this? Or Ken?
Yes, I'll pass this one off to Ken. I know he's been, we've been short planning staff here now for almost a week. And so he's been back at work on a solo department. So.
I'll give you a very brief overview on the variance. V3 2025 for six-foot tall vents at 1108 Olivia Street. The applicant, Justin Novak, requested this request here. All the homes along Olivia Street that abut County Road 29 typically have a very close distance from both the county road and then the trail that abuts all of those lots. So they're typically... they're typically looking for privacy. In the case of Mr. Novak, he is looking for containing their dog, buffering some noise from the roadway, and then enhancing security for his lot in general. The ordinance does not allow a six-foot-tall fence within thirty feet of the rear property line, which would be in this case immediately to the north of the trail and County Road 29. Several fences in the neighborhood have been given variances for the same issue, including the house directly to the east of the applicant's home. And at the May twentieth planning commission meeting, the planning commission did recommend a four to zero vote to recommend that the council approve the variance request. There's a little map showing it's one of the many homes in the Takalski Acres development that abuts County Road 29 and the trail. We'll zoom in here a little bit to the plat. If our thirty-foot normal setback applied, the area in orange is what would be off limits to anything more than a four-foot-tall fence, so it'd be a very, very small backyard that they could have with the full six-foot height, and that is what they're seeking to match their neighbor to the east. And this is not the exact home to the east, but is that same vinyl panel-type fence that they're looking to install that the neighbors already have installed on their property directly next door. So the yellow line indicates where they're going to propose to put the fence up. And everything needs the ordinance replacement setbacks other than the height within thirty feet of that rear property line. Couple pictures of the home from the front and the rear, you can see the white six-foot-tall privacy fence to the home on the east there. This one will be kind of an extension of that. They will not connect directly to that fence, but it will look very similar to that and be directly adjacent to it with a little space in between for maintenance purposes. Just a couple other views here showing how close the trail is and some of the landscaping that they do have out there. So again, staff and the planning commission recommend approval of the variance V three, twenty twenty-five, with the findings contained in the resolution, which is in front of the council tonight for consideration.
Council members, do you have any questions or comments? Otherwise, entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 25060205, approving variance V three, twenty twenty-five, to allow a six-foot-tall fence at eleven oh eight Olivia Street Southeast, as proposed by Justin Novak.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number ten, general business, A, request for purchase equipment. Josh, do you introduce?
Yes, I will pass this off to Chief Rinda, next two items, actually, so.
Thank you.
So the first item is, we fundraised some money to buy a F-150 pickup, and we're looking for a little help to equip it. Total cost for the equipment is sixteen thousand dollars. Looking to use eight thousand dollars out of the Public Safety Fund grant money that was given to the city two years ago, and the rural would pick up the other eight thousand dollars, which they approved already.
I'll make a motion that we, we approve the request to purchase the F-150 pickup truck.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any other questions or comments?
I think the motion is not the approval of the pickup, but for the assistance for the equipment.
License.
Correct, correct. Just the eight thousand dollars for the.
I'll, I'll amend my motion.
If you want to buy the truck, you sure can.
Oh, you're right.
Yeah.
I'll amend my, my motion.
I try.
We'd like, I'm going to make a motion that the city helps with the public safety funds that the city received last year in the amount of eight thousand dollars for equipment for, for the additional equipment that the F-150 pickup truck.
I'll second.
You've been out second, Rick. Any other? I was second there, but that's.
Oh, gotcha.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion pass. Steve?
Pension fund. So the second item in front of you is request to increase our pension from forty-one fifty per year service to five thousand dollars per year service. You'll see attached in your packet essentially where the fund is at today, what projections are with the fund, and showing that the fund can support this increase. Essentially, the fund would have to lose about twenty-five percent before the city or the rural have to kick into the fund to balance it out. This is very, very much a conservative approach, but I mean, it is a healthy, healthy benefit in, increase, but the fund can support such increase, so that's why we're asking for it.
And it had been three years since the last one, right?
I believe it was three years ago. Again, I would not be here if the fund could not support an increase, if, if, I wouldn't be here if I was asking for you guys to kick in, but the fund can support an increase, and it gives a quite the cushion before any type of, the fund would have to take quite the negative balance before any type of, anybody from the rural or the city would have to kick in any money.
And it really isn't. I think it's only, if I remember right, three years ago, it was, this is only a hundred dollars more than what it was. I think it was seven fifty that last jump that we took, wasn't it?
It could have been. I, I don't remember. I think it was thirty-seven fifty to forty-one fifty.
Was it that?
Yeah. To date, the fund is down less than a percent from the start of the year to the end of April. I don't have the end of May numbers, but, so less than one percent from January one till now.
Which has been pretty volatile, and so one percent.
Correct, yeah. This fund can only, I mean, it's mandated by the state on what we can be in, so it's not in a very aggressive portfolio. You'll see on the last page, I believe it is, that's a projection sheet. With the fund, you'll see in the, the middle column is twenty twenty-five, you'll see with, with it, the benefit level changing to five, five thousand dollars per year service, and then we used a minus five percent rate of return, we still show a, quite a healthy, positive balance compared to our liabilities.
I'll make a motion to approve the retirement benefit moving from four thousand one hundred fifty dollars to five thousand dollars per year of service.
Of note, is that effective immediately? I, I would recommend yes.
Effective immediately, yeah.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Pass. Josh, introduce your next item?
Yes, open park board seat. So at the last council meeting, the city council did select candidates for the open board positions. All of the boards had at least one applicant for the open positions, except for the park board, which did not have any. This did all, also one, we had one board, which is the planning commission, that had three applicants. So in the past, when this has happened, the city council has had the decision about whether to offer the open seat, if there are any, to any of the unselected candidates. And after the meeting, Brian Paulson, who was an applicant for the planning commission, did reach out and express interest in the open park board seat. So I guess the question is, would the council like to offer it to him as a candidate? And then if so, would they like to re-interview Mr. Paulson for that, since he last interviewed for a planning commission seat? I guess it would be my recommendation, knowing that it is sometimes difficult to find willing and able volunteers for city boards and commissions, that we, I would recommend the city council do consider Mr. Paulson as a viable candidate. And I guess I would also recommend moving forward without a second interview, because much of the conversations for boards and commissions centers around providing future guidance to the city council in making decisions, whatever that particular little sect may be. And so I guess I would make a recommendation that we, if he is certainly willing, that we do offer the open board position to Brian Paulson.
Are you willing? I'll make the motion to appoint Brian, or Brian Paulson to the park board. I'll second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carry. Next item.
That was all the items. We were down to miscellaneous. It's meeting minutes for a couple golf board meetings, the planning commission and utilities minutes, but there is nothing else for action on the agenda.
Miscellaneous items, then, members or staff, Rick, do you have anything? I have nothing. Sean?
No, I don't believe so.
Maggie?
No, not this evening.
Josh?
Nothing else.
Guest attorney?
Lost my mic. Nothing else, thank you.
Ken?
I do not.
Nothing else.
Police chief?
I don't have anything.
I feel kind of offended no one has anything to talk about. He did make a great mayor for a couple of minutes. Take a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made second, all five say aye. Aye. Thank you.